Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March the 7th. If you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and also the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. To start the meeting, it's the opportunity for public comment. If anyone is here and would like to raise an issue that is not on the agenda, or who has a question for the board or staff, now's the time to let us know. Margie?
Sure. Just a request. With the YouTube livestreams, it's difficult to participate from home on that platform. And I noticed on West Town website this week that they livestream on YouTube, and they also allow public participation through Zoom. And so it seems like it would be a simple addition to offer citizens to participate from home. So I hope that you will maybe consider that. And then, this has been on my mind actually for well over a year now, but I just haven't brought it up. There's been other things going on that were more important. But before too much time passes, I'm just curious. The previous township manager that separated at the end of December 2021, who approved or approves his payout?
Well, he was paid for what year to accrue in terms of personal hours that were vacation, whatever he may not have used. That's what the payout was, if that's what you mean by payout.
Right, but does the board approve that? Does the figure come before the board, from the finance department, or from the assistant?
Yes, the HR director informed us of the payment that was required to pay out the accrued vacation, et cetera, and the board was informed.
We don't approve it, we just inform. We don't have the option to approve it, that's. And the reason I'm asking, and maybe Ms. Camp can fill us all in, even though the township manager before the previous township manager, I believe there was some legal proceedings that took place because allegedly she took more than she was, what the township thought she was entitled to. I was unable to pull up news articles on that. It's probably off the website, but I don't remember the details of it. I mean, I think Brian at the time was really doing most of the West Goshen work, but.
I'm not sure if it's all over tonight. You've asked a question about the previous township manager, I believe I've answered it, so.
Okay, so just so you know, I will be asking Mr. Bayshore. I just want to see the figures on that, and I just want to understand my local government in all aspects. And so I will be just asking for that information.
The figures on what?
On his vacation payout, his sick leave payout, what his pension will be, how long he'll be receiving full insurance benefits.
Those aren't subject to the right to know law.
Okay, well, we'll see.
Oh, no, I'm telling you that some of that information is not subject to the right to know law. Some of it isn't, some of it isn't.
Even though the post-employment?
He's not entitled to post-employment.
Well, and see, those are just simple questions I'll ask and.
The right to know law doesn't cover the asking of questions. It covers the release of requests.
Okay, great, so I have to send an email and ask the question, and then you can give me that information within a couple of days.
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Margie. Any other questions or comments, issues? Very good, we'll move on to agenda number four, which is the ball field use agreements. Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before the board this evening are three ball field use agreements between three little leagues, or three leagues that utilize the fields at West Goshen Community Park and at Cloud Park. The proposed agreements before the board are with East Side Little League for use of fields at West Goshen Community Park and Cloud Park, West Side Little League for use of fields at West Goshen Community Park, and the Westchester Girls' Softball Association for use of fields at West Goshen Community Park. The current agreements expired in November of 2022, and the proposed agreements before the board this evening will begin with the new league season. Each agreement would cover a period of five years, and would charge an annual fee of $5,000 per year for the use of the fields by the leagues. The fees that are proposed are in line with what we are currently charging for their use. By all accounts, the leagues are excellent tenants. Dorian is nodding her head, so I believe that that is accurate, and we welcome their use of our facilities. And I believe, and the agreements that are before the board have been reviewed and prepared by the township's solicitor, as well as reviewed by the board previously, and with the leagues as well.
Thank you, Chris. Does the board have any further questions or comments on the draft agreements?
Yes, I have a few. Sean, I was going to speak.
Go ahead.
I guess one thing is, I don't see any language in this agreement relative to the snap or where they exist on the baseball fields.
There are, if they're not used by the leagues, that's what Dorian said.
Yeah, they don't have any to do with snap law.
Okay, it's a whole separate entity that runs those?
Yes, John Leary used to run it, but he no longer does.
Is there any language that we need to put in here, since we own the property? Do they exist on our property?
Well, I mean, it's locked under locking key, so nobody goes in there.
And this only gives them the right to use the fields. To the extent that they're not granted the right to use it, they're not permitted.
Okay.
Yeah. It's very specific to just the use of the fields.
Okay, and then I guess I got another question on page, I guess we're in the first page.
Of the first agreement?
Order of agreement, right. Whereas the property is in this local park, and then this Cloud Park and these are proven on baseball field, and then in parentheses it has Cloud Park Ball Field. And I thought it should be the Ball Field at Cloud Park. Because once we name the ball fields in the future, if we do name them, then we can, it's, that's separate.
I see your point.
It's a Ball Field at Cloud Park, it's not Cloud Park Ball Field.
Well, I think the purpose of doing that is just to identify in this agreement as like a general.
And I agree with that, but once we name the baseball fields, it's going to get, it's going to get.
I don't think it will, but yeah.
I don't.
I think it's, I see your point.
I see what you're saying, yeah, I tend to agree with Dorian.
And then whereas the Ball Field at Community Park, and the Ball Field at Cloud, shall collectively be referred to as Ball Field, it's the next exception to. Do you want to copy that, Kristen?
Yeah, I didn't turn all three of them, so that's fine. I mean, it's just.
They're not currently made, only Flag Field has a name.
Right, so that's one maybe, so.
Assume they correct, yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So, Dorian and Chris, you okay with that change? This agreement?
I mean, I don't, I'm.
Not sure a change is necessary.
I don't think the change is really necessary, but I think it's just supposed to. I think the intention isn't not so much to say this is the name of the field, and I don't think that's what Ms. Smith is getting at. I just don't know if they're making that change really doesn't, doesn't.
Yeah, because we don't call out Flag Field individually in here either. We just say.
At the park.
At the community park, correct. So, yeah.
Tina, you satisfied with that?
I don't know.
So it's only defined for purposes of this document. So when you have a term underlined and in paren, that's the definition, only specific to what's in this agreement.
Right.
So it's not, it doesn't have a relevance to anywhere else. So, you know, in the first where, second where I suppose, Community Park Ball Field, underlined, that's just for purposes of this agreement. That doesn't mean that, I mean, again, it's six and one, half a dozen, you know. I don't think it makes any substantive change. I don't have an objection to changing it, but I don't think, I also don't think it's necessary. But it's.
I'm fine with it.
Are the board members, you okay with it as written? Okay, so we'll do it as written, will you? Any other questions or comments from the board on these three agreements?
Yeah, I have a question. The boards looking, or the townships looking to do some work at the Community Park, name the work of the tennis courts, the basin, upgrade of bathrooms, additions, splashback. Within this five-year period, do you anticipate any conflict with that construction activity perceived with the ballpark going to be yours?
No.
So we'll be okay?
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, we're ready to approve these agreements for the use of the ball field. Do we need to do them one at a time, or should we do them in?
We could do them all at once.
Think you do them all at once.
Did I miss public comment, or are you?
Well, let's get a motion first, and then we can talk about it. So is there a motion to approve these agreements for ball field use by East Side Little League, West Side Little League, and Westchester Girls' Softball Association?
Sure.
Thank you, John, answer a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any board comments or questions on the motion? Is there any public comments or questions? Margie?
Yes, I'm curious, do these little league entities have tournaments at these fields?
And so you guys, anyone talk about it?
West Side, this time.
Yeah. I don't believe that they do, no. I mean, they have the playoffs towards the end of the season, but I don't know exactly what you mean by.
Well, when teams come in from out of state.
No, 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 not, nothing like that.
Do they rent? Do they sublease and get the fields out?
No, not that.
Okay. Well, I have, thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on, the motion passes 4-0. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is item number five. Discussion of possible approval of Resolution Number 10, 2023, granting final subdivision and land development approval for the construction of 105,000 square foot mini warehouse self-storage facility at 300 Schneider Avenue. Brian, would you like to introduce this, please?
Yes, good evening. So tonight before you is the resolution of approval for conditional approval for the preliminary final subdivision land development plan for the Safe Store facility at 300 Center Avenue. The plan has been reviewed by me and recommended to the planning commission. The planning commission did meet and recommend the approval to the board at the February 14th meeting. The conditions of the approval are outlined in the resolution, as well as a couple of comments in my February 8th letter. I have a presentation up here in front of you that was provided for review by the planning commission. Tonight, Chris Jensen is here from the applicant's engineering firm, TM Associates, to answer any questions you may have. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have about my review.
Okay, thanks, Brian. So, board, are there any questions for Brian or for the engineer?
If you'd like, I can step through the presentation as well.
How many slides are there?
Six.
Yeah, let's do that.
So this is a view of what it potentially would look like as you pull up to the building coming in from Schneider Avenue. This is as you come, starting around the backside of the building, so this is the side facing 202. And this is what it would look like potentially.
Isn't this built on a slope, this facility?
Yes, if you look in this instance, you can see this area of, that looks like veneer.
Yeah.
Veneer, that is where the grade drops. So if you go to the slide before, you see here's where we're at grade, driving to the top end. As you go across the face of the building, it'll be dropping down and around to the back. And then here's the back entrance, the back corner, that's a full-story lower.
Okay.
This is a night view, and then this is the actual plan. So this is the area right here that's at street elevation as you come in up Schneider. As you drop around behind the building, everything drops down to the back, and then this is the lower entrance back here.
So the front is facing Snyder, and the rear is facing 202.
Yeah, here's the, basically this is the front of the building, and then this is, I would say, the rear of the building. And then this, this right here is 202, and Snyder is up on the top of the plan.
Why, this was originally two lots and has been consolidated and now it's been subdivided again into two lots?
Yes.
Why was that necessary? Why wasn't the original subdivision? Okay.
It was really, the one lot's very, very small.
It was.
Yeah, it's not large enough to have a development on it, yeah.
Okay, so now the lot that isn't developed, is being developed.
Yeah, it was only a one-acre park, it's a one-acre parcel, and then the 5.8, I think it's 5.8 acres. So the one acre wasn't large enough, so they had to combine them and then split them off the way they want.
What does the developer plan to do with the undeveloped parcel?
Mr. Jim Burke from the, from Safe Stores here, he just came in. He's actually here today. There are no plans at the moment. I know that I've had, the brokers will call me from time to time and say, can you check, will this plan work, or will that plan work? I've not heard anything where they're actually sold the property yet, so.
Are you actively looking to sell the property for redevelopment for some use?
Yes, it's owned for industrial leaves, and so whatever's within that zoning class.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, do you have another slide here about, this is a wooded area right now. I mean, it's not, not developed. What about the number of trees that are being removed? How many trees are going to be replaced?
So, here with me for a moment, I have the number of trees that are being removed. It's, my recollection, it's approximately 300, and we are applying the replacement ordinance and planting well over 100 trees. So the numbers are, total removal of 327 trees that are four inches diameter or greater. That necessitates a replacement of 164 proposed replacement trees at a one-and-a-half-inch height or six-foot height minimum. And the number of replacement trees proposed is 164.
Your word says two for every tree removed, so there are a half a tree over there required. For every two trees you remove, you have, plant one, there are a half a tree over there.
So you see the substantial.
This is the landscaping plan.
Right.
And this is the plan, John, you were asking about. This is the plan showing the removal of all the trees that are required to be considered for replacement on the property.
What's the stormwater management plan up here?
There are multiple stormwater surface basins, and they use a technology called managed release concept, which is a slow release of the stormwater from one to the next. And it's what we call a treatment train. And ultimately, at the lower end of the site, at the bottom of the hill, the stormwater is discharged via a level spreader instead of individual discharge pipes. It is spread out over a larger area, and then it goes to what is an existing wetland area, and then makes its way into a culvert that goes under 202.
There's no disturbance to the wetlands, right?
No disturbance to the wetlands. We fully respect the wetland offer. There is a flood, there is a flood plain there.
There is one disturbance to the wetland, just the connection to the sanitary sewer.
That's the answer.
Because that's what, here in the corner, the sanitary sewer is right here, and they have to connect into that. And they did get a special exception.
Oh, thank you.
They did get presumed for that connection.
What about DEP or anybody?
They have DEP approval, they just got, just got your plan approved. I got it accepted.
To allow to use that, to put the pipe in there. DEP?
Correct, well, the MPDS permit for earth disturbance considers the entire disturbance of the parcel, including that portion of the land as well.
But you're not required to have an MPDS permit, are you?
For land disturbance, yes.
Yes.
Okay, for the land disturbance, but not for any further sampling and that's, okay.
No, the MPDS permit for them is, they're under your township permit for the land.
Okay.
So there's one, to answer your question, Tina, this is basin A, this is basin B, and this is basin C. C drains to B, B discharges this direction, and A is in this direction up back here. And everything in the site falls from Snyder Avenue towards 202, so they come down to the other side.
I have another question. In the design of the facility, is it solar panel ready, or are you considering to do that?
No.
Do you have a large flat roof there, is that a flat roof?
Uh, yes.
And you did not consider solar panels or a green roof or anything else?
Safe Store typically does not use solar, I mean, if there's some sort of incentive they have in the past, I've had probably, I've done, I don't know, the 30 or so sites that I've done, there's probably been about three or four that that's really happened.
There's quite a lot of incentives around right now, so is it something worth looking into?
Sure.
Other questions from the board? What was the discussion of the planning commission? Was there any particular concerns or issues raised?
The couple of issues that were raised were, one was the question about the tree replacement, and another one was about the top of the retaining wall, which, to make sure, and I'll show you on the plan to answer the question. Here's the retaining wall detail showing the fence at the top of the wall.
What's the issue?
There's a guardrail there, and I assume there's a fence going to be behind the guardrail for, for the fall protection, because the guardrail's not tall enough. And because of the height of the retaining wall. There's a retaining wall on the site. It says black line, it starts here, runs all the way around the parking lot, and ends over here.
So there's a guardrail.
There's a guardrail, a guardrail on top of it for cars, and then there's a fence behind it on the plan.
That's what it is.
Yes, it's already on the plan. It's a question of the planning commission. What I looked at the plan again for tonight, I found the detail, shell defense.
It's showing somebody a photo.
Somebody would climb over the guardrail.
How tall is their tank?
Some places it's seven feet, at least, not taller. But the guardrail's only about 30 or so inches tall for a car, where a fence is going to be as far.
And the amount of parking is determined by what for this particular application?
The zoning ordinance used to find the parking, and that was reviewed and approved by Jake.
That was subject to a zoning area for which a variance was obtained to exceed what the ordinance stipulated as a maximum of five spaces, which is somewhat atypical in the way ordinance is written. So for the, you know, operation of a facility like this, which are only in storage facilities that are indoor, this site has 25 spaces, so then you'd believe that we acquired that.
I believe that order leaf was granted in 2021.
Yeah, so the, and I believe that section, the ordinance has been changed for parking. But at the time this came through, it was a maximum permitted number of parking spaces for a self-storage facility. Typically, the oldest style, you pull up to the garage door, you open it, and there's your stuff. Because everything is inside.
I think it was amended to be by square footage.
I believe it was, as well, yes.
So is this like what it's described through self-storage, is right?
No.
This is you, okay, it's all inside. It's how many stories, three stories high?
It's one down, if you were to look at it, it would be up, and then two up.
Two, okay.
So it's three stories.
Other questions? Board? Okay. At this point, we'll look to see if there's any public comment, and then we'll ask the board for a motion, but is there any public comments or questions about the actual design at this point? Okay, so is the board willing to make a motion to approve, what's the resolution number?
10 dash 2023.
Okay, yeah, Resolution Number 10, 2023, granting land development approval for 300 Snyder Avenue. Thank you, Margie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any public comment or questions about the motion? Okay, and we're ready to take a vote. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on, the motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
I have one question. Sorry, my name is Dan Lyons, I'm here from Stockchild Child, represent the. This might be for Kristen or Brian, perhaps, but is there a way we could have the agreements and plans signed outside of the public hearing?
We don't sign the developer agreements as part of the public meeting. Yeah, approval gives you the right to have and sign the agreements.
Yes.
That's why I'm going to take part in that.
And you'll get a letter from me by end of the week with a copy of the resolution, which is approved by the board.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Paul, did you say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to agenda number six, which is cash management options for the township's bank accounts, with Chris and Christine. Hi, Christine, welcome.
Sorry, I have one comment. This year, as kind of these are being put up in the township, in the self-storage places?
Well, it's a very economically viable proposition to be a business for, and it's owned, they're putting them up in the zone where it's allowed, so maybe it's a business which you get, Steve, I don't know.
Unfortunately, it fits zone for it, and meets the requirements, you can't stop it.
This is what's.
It's in demand. I don't know why.
Okay, so, Chris or Christine?
Mr. Chairman, I think I'll kick this off. I want to say from the onset, Christine did a lot of great work in preparing this, did a very thorough analysis, and I think put together a good recommendation for the board to consider this evening, but I just want to recognize all the work that Christine did in putting this together. So during the first part of this year, Christine and I have been researching options for investment options for the township's existing cash accounts under Section 3204 of the Second Class Township Code. The Board of Supervisors does have the authority to invest municipal funds in certain types of accounts, and then this was expanded by Act 10 of 2016. Our primary analysis has been looking at investment options relating to such types of deposit by utilizing the depositories that the township currently has a relationship with, which are TD Bank, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, or Pliggett, S&amp;T Bank, and Santander Bank. We looked at the full, at the full amount of cash accounts, and we provided a breakdown as of January 31st, 2023. We also analyzed methods through which to obtain additional interest income on the township's existing checking accounts. So we looked at 3, 6, and 9-month CD levels, and this was in order to ensure that they, that we invest in CDs that they redeem within the current calendar year. So what we didn't want to do is have them redeem crossover and redeem into another calendar year. We actually don't recommend utilizing S&amp;T Bank just because the rates were not as competitive as the other ones that we looked at. For this initial period, we're recommending that we keep all the terms identical. This will ensure that they all redeem at the same time, and would make the development of a reconciliation process more streamlined. And we also don't recommend investing funds currently within the liquid fuels or the American Rescue Plan Fund, since one, those will be spent, and they also have auditing requirements. We also looked at the balance in the Waste and Recycling Fund and do those balances. We don't think that it's necessary to invest anything in that account as well. So we're really looking at, was it two, four, six? We're looking at nine, nine accounts. And we're recommending investing about $19.8 million, which represents about 55% of the existing cash balance. And we're recommending investing about nineteen point eight million dollars, which represents about fifty-five percent of the existing cash balance. And interviewing these, interviewing these C D rates, we provided information to the board, and Christine, an alternative to Christine momentarily, she did reach out to these institutions and got updated rate information. And the rates are actually a little bit higher than what is published in the memo that's before the board this evening. In terms of general banking, we're recommending, uh, moving our accounts that are currently with S and T Bank and splitting them at seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent between Santander and Pliget. And the reason for that is to make sure that we're maintaining a local branch for emergency purposes in order to be able to save on payroll or a debt payment. And Pliget does offer very good interest rates, and they're excellent institution. They just don't have any branches, and we just think it's important to maintain that emergency branch. So based on this analysis and looking at the budget and all the recommendations here, we believe that this can net approximately for, a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars in additional, uh, interest revenue to the township. And I'll turn it over to Christine.
Um, yeah, so I did reach out to, um, the banking institutions that are referencing CDs for to get some updated rates. We're recommending, um, you know, CDs at TD Bank and Santander, both of those rates have gone up. Um, we, in the document that was published, TD's rate was at five point zero one percent at that time. It's now up to five point two two percent. Um, and Santander was at four point four nine, and it's now up to four point seven three. Um, I also reached out to them about the interest rate on our checking accounts. Because a lot of times with the financial institutions, your interest rate is based on your total aggregated cash balance that you have with them. So if we're looking to bring additional funds over to Santander, they're actually able to increase our interest rate a little bit more. We received notice that as of February first, our rate went up to two and a half percent for our checking accounts at Santander. With the added balances that we're planning on bringing in, they can get us up close to three percent on our checking accounts. So that's really, really great. It's not as high as TD Bank, but I just want to note that that's really because we have all of our products and services with TD Bank. That's who we operate all of our funds out of. So our service fees are netted out in that interest rate. That's why it's a little bit lower. Just because it pays for, for all the services that we have with TD Bank.
Thanks, Christine. Questions or comments from the board?
The one thing I would want to, I do want to say is, uh, when we invest, if ultimately the board decides to invest the money in CDs, we will see on our revenue stream, you won't see the monthly interest revenue that we normally receive. So if you're projecting roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest throughout the course of the year, that's about sixty-two thousand dollars a month. So you won't see that on a monthly basis on the Treasurers report. You'll see it at the end of the year when everything redeems.
And I did forget to add one thing. I did rerun some of the numbers based on the new interest rates that they provided us, and it looks like we'll be closer to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, these are all estimates based on, you know, cash flows from previous years. We don't know what they will actually be from this year, so it's all an estimate. But based on the information we had, we originally used, it looks like it might be closer to four hundred and fifty thousand.
And Christine's analysis when we were putting this together took into account the entire cash flow for twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, whatever happens in twenty twenty-two is not exactly going to happen in twenty twenty-three. So, but it's a reasonable estimate to kind of see where we'll wind up, so.
So Christine, you'll count all of the remaining balances in the general fund that's not invested in CDs is liquid. It will cover all liquid needs for the total rest of the year, basically?
I think so.
I mean, it's certainly above the twenty percent minimum.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I think so. I mean, you know, we have some different things going on that we kind of need to be aware of that may affect our revenue. Um, you know, obviously, yeah, TV, we don't really know what's going to happen with that, with P D C. And transfer taxes sort of trending a little differently, um, this year than it was last year, given the mortgage rates. So, you know, there's some unknowns there. Um, so we'll, you know, we'll obviously watch closely, but I think we should be okay.
And the C D investment in these banks is still collateralized?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's a staple, so.
Yep.
Other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. Um, the estimate there is about fifty-five percent will look into moving to CDs. Would you feel more comfortable if that number was even a little bit higher? Or why, I guess what I'm getting at, why do you think that fifty-five percent of our cash reserves right now would be appropriate? Why not even more, given that we need maybe twenty, twenty-five percent?
So, um, you know, I looked at each fund individually. Um, I didn't necessarily target a specific percentage. I kind of looked at each fund individually and the types of transactions that we have, um, on there. You know, for instance, Waste and Recycling, we, we know that that balance, you know, we knew when we raised rates, that wasn't going to cover us for that whole term, so we don't want to really strap that cash for, for capital reserve and general fund. And, um, and restricted parks, I looked at what are our expenses usually, because there's not, for restricted parks, um, capital reserve, there's no revenues there. So you, so you really have to pay attention to what the expenses are. So that's sort of what I, what I based it off of. And then for general fund and sewer fund, I really looked at what our cash flows have been and sort of what was a comfortable level. You know, on a monthly basis.
And the other thing to take into account, that fifty-five percent also includes the balances and funds that are now recommended, like our, like Espro accounts and things of that nature. If you net those out of it, it's actually more like sixty-two thirty-eight split.
Sixty-two thirty-eight is actually more of what we're investing. If you take out all those spots, we can't invest.
So this is the nine-month term?
Yes.
And what happens at the end of the nine-month?
So at the end of the nine-month term, which we're, um, obviously, if the board is in agreement, we'll, we'll move pretty quickly to, to make this happen. So you would look at CDs redeeming in mid-December. So at that time, you know, what we had in CDs would be transferred back over to those checking accounts, and we would recognize the interest, you know, of those investments prior to the end of the year. And then, you know, the legwork's already done, so, you know, to look at this a little bit earlier next year, you know. Yeah, just do, again, we could look at longer, longer terms, um, that sort of thing. We'll have some more of those.
Make some, make some adjustments as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I have another question here. The Fed seems to be very determined to keep on raising their rates, to try to tame inflation, to keep it on two percent, almost at a point maybe of getting us into a recession. From your, in research, how closely do these C D rates follow the Fed's increases in their rates?
Um, I think we see increases pretty, you know, hand in hand when Fed increases. It's a pretty quick turnaround to when, to when they're raising rates on our, I mean, especially on our checking accounts. We, we see that pretty quickly. Rates have been going up, you know, kind of hand in hand.
So my, my question is, the question of timing. Uh, the Fed's probably going to do a point five basis points rate the next time around. So next week or two, we'll love to see another bump. Um, at that point there, would that be the best time to make this move?
Well, I mean, if we put it off longer, you would have to probably look at a shorter term for, for this year. I mean, the potential was there to increase it, but then, you know, you're losing a couple months' interest on your term period. So it may sort of, I mean, I don't know, obviously.
Yeah, you're going to jump to that fair split sometime.
But it may sort of come out to a wash, you know, on the shorter, what you're losing, you know, what you would gain on a higher interest rate, you may be losing in the delayed time of making the investment. You know, that's something we could look at, but.
I mean, some of these yields already reflect anticipation of what the Fed's going to do, so.
Right. I mean, they've gone up, I mean, it's only been two weeks since, since we got rates the first time and we published one with the packet. And that, what I need tonight, those are rates as of today. So just in that short, short time period, you know, they have increased, so.
And it was a story, is it nine months?
Now, we have a ladder.
Why do we not look at this?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I support this analysis because I think a nine-month is the peak short-term rate right now. You get the best return. It's a bird in the hand of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe even more by.
I actually have, um, from TD Bank, the rates that they sent. For, as of today, the rate, the rate is the same for nine months, ten months, eleven months, and it actually goes down twelve months. So, I mean, that really is your, your peak rate right now. Um, I know you asked about the, the C D ladders that the, um, that the sewer authorities do. It's a little bit different on the sewer authority side because they're only investing money from one fund, where we're investing money from multiple different funds, and it kind of just gets messy if we, and especially this is the first time we're doing it. So, you know, once we get a process down, we may feel better saying, okay, we can do a three-month on this one, or a six-month on that one, that sort of thing. But because there's so many moving pieces, there are differences in funds, we wanted to make sure that it was clean and, um, yeah.
Christine, are you confident you can get these funds moved from S and T into Santander and Pliget and get these CDs forward in the next couple of weeks, so you can execute on CD at the end of the year?
I don't want to commit myself, but I would hope that we could have it at least partially done by the end of this week. You know, we've, we've been in communication with the financial, financial institutions to get ahead of what they're going to need from us in order to be able to do that. That seems pretty straightforward, so I don't, you know, obviously, you know, if the board's in agreement, that's something we'll start working on tomorrow. So I don't see that being a long drawn-out process or anything like that.
Is it from the sewer? Do we have to get some things in insurance? It was optional, but then when we looked into it, thought we needed it, no?
Yeah. Yeah, I got from that.
Okay, so any other board questions on this proposal? So, Christine, we need a motion here to approve this, or just, what do you think of the board?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, cash management plan as outlined in the memo provided to this month's, this agenda meeting. As, you know, investment in CDs in the amount of nineteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand as outlined in the memo. Is there a second? Thank you, John.
I just want to make one more comment. I just want to state that the balances that we're talking about moving on here are estimates. You know, we haven't, you know, this was as of the end of January. We just got our February statement. So, you know, we don't really know what those actual cash flows were. So the C D amounts will stay the same, but the amounts that we're talking about transferring from S and T Bank to Santander and Pliget might, might be a little different than what, not by much, but, you know, depending on how the actual transactions, you know, shook out. But the, the C D amounts will remain the same. It just may be the, the deposits into the other banks that.
So my motion with the nineteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand is correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's just the balances from the bank, the checking accounts.
Yeah, just, just so it's, just so it's clear. And then moving the funds from S and T Bank to Santander or Pliget based on a seventy-five, twenty-five split.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. A second. Is there any other comments from the board?
My split is estimated too. She said it could also be sixty-two thirty-eight.
No, the sixty-two thirty-eight is, so the nineteen million, nineteen million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was being invested was fifty-five percent of the cash balance. So if you take out the accounts that we are recommending investing, like the, like the various Espro accounts and the zero balance accounts that we have, then those are not being invested, and that's where you get the sixty-two thirty-eight. The seventy-five twenty-five split is the balance is in S and T, exactly.
The body of the whole two banks.
Got you.
And we are also recommending, I just want to put that out there so it's clear, a transfer, an additional transfer for Waste and Recycling from TD Bank to Santander Bank to get that reserve balance really up where it should be, because it's a, it's a little low. It's such a small fund, the, the interest rate kind of didn't keep that balance growing as it was, was intended, was intended to. So we just want to increase it a little bit to make sure that we have enough to cover payroll and the mortgage or something like that.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is there any public comments or questions, Martin?
I'd also just like to recognize Christine. Thank you. This is really a great presentation. I'm so happy to see this. As frustrated as I am, all this money we missed out on. Of course, we have a new finance director, a new township manager. I don't know if any of you were on the board, but I asked this question, how to be three, four, or five years ago. We carry so much, um, like, so much revenue, our general fund balances, our balances are all really high. Why? Are we just letting it sit in a checking account? So I'm really glad to see this. I don't know why it took so long. I, I do have some comments. I'm familiar with lathering CDs. I just did it recently. I'm curious, post-retirement, why wouldn't we go longer? I'm a little bit confused about why we're trying to just have the terms for nine months till the end of the year.
Because you want to book it in the calendar year for budgetary purposes. Because when we start doing this process, you're not going to see the interest come from until the C D redeems. So for budgetary purposes, you want to make sure that you're capturing that interest income by the end of the, this year.
And I take it you did clarify or confirm that all these banks, all these terms, the interest accrues at the end of the term? It doesn't accrue after quarterly or every six months?
It accrues at the end, and it accrues when the C D redeems.
On all of them? They're all that?
Yes.
I, I will say, I have not verified that with Santander. I know that that goes with TD Bank. But that's generally how they all operate. I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, I've never, I've done this in other places, and I've never seen it redeem earlier than when it matures.
Have we checked with Fidelity?
We only utilize the banking institutions that have been approved by this board.
Okay, but I just know we have a relationship with Fidelity with our pension funds, not Fidelity, Vanguard.
Yeah, Vanguard's an investment advisor for the pension fund.
Right, yeah, I'm not sure.
It's a banking institution.
Okay. Um, I might have had that wrong, but, yeah, I must have forgot Fidelity. So they, they're actually a broker. I think Vanguard might do it as well. So it might be worth just a telephone call to Vanguard where our pension funds are, just to see what their rates are. It might be a possibility.
So we'll just answer that, Martin. So we're sticking with C D investment in a banking institution that will collateralize the, the public money that's invested there. So keeping it simple relative to the chasing a small amount of what the C D rate might give with somewhere else.
Okay. Um, let's see, that's probably it. Still not convinced that we just need to terminate all of them for nine months?
No, I kind of agree with that, Martin. I think this is a walk before we run kind of situation. You know, as we can get, experience, get all these funds in the right locations. Like Christine said, nine months is the sweet spot right now. It fits in with getting all this interest into our accounts at the end of the year. As we look into twenty twenty-four, we can decide what additional terms or periods that might make sense if they go beyond the year end. Christine, I guess I'll have to figure out how, like, it's written, so we'll deal with it.
Yeah, but it is, it is, it's a separate audit requirement. You have to recognize estimated interest and, you know, it sort of crosses multiple years kind of thing, so.
It's doable, but we don't need to do it now.
Well, I'm happy to see it and glad you're approving it. I just wish it would have been done five years ago.
Thank you.
And I think a citizen budget, budget finance committee would have tackled this issue long ago, had funded it for it, so, thanks.
Thank you, Martin. Any other questions or comments? Steve?
Yeah, I just want to compliment Chris and Christine on the board thinking of the money that the township has to. Compliment them, so, show appreciation.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Great, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes, clause zero. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item number seven, which is discussion regarding the survey results for possible amendments to requirements for projections into rear yards of the R three C zoning district. So Chris, I can handle this one, thank you. Uh, so, um, before the Board of Supervisors this evening, the results of the survey conducted for potential amendment to the R three C zoning district. By way of background information, the previous history of this district was discussed in the agenda materials for this meeting. During the course of twenty twenty-two, the township received two applications to the zoning hearing board for variances from the setback requirements for projections into rear yards in order to construct patios. The information in the agenda materials gives the, uh, the section in the township zoning ordinance as well. zoning ordinance as relevant to that. Uh, there were two applications in 2022, one twelve Trevor Drive and one one oh eight Trevor Drive, which were both located in the Goshen Walk subdivision. Uh, the former application was withdrawn prior to the scheduled hearing of the zoning hearing board, and the latter was denied. A copy of the decision that was issued by the zoning hearing board on November the twenty-eighth was provided in the agenda materials. Property owners on Trevor Drive attended, um, attended the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting to express their disappointment in the zoning hearing board discussion. Uh, at that meeting, the board discussed possible amendment of the zoning ordinance in order to reduce the setback requirements in the R3C zoning district from fifteen feet from adjacent property line to ten feet. After discussion, it was determined that the board wanted a survey to be conducted among the property owners in this zoning district. Letters were mailed to the property owners in the zoning district on January the eighteenth, asking for their opinions with responses due by February the twenty-eighth. There were three hundred and seventeen letters mailed out. Additionally, the planning commission discussed the matter at their meeting on February the fourteenth. Uh, survey results, so the three hundred and seventeen properties, the township received responses from forty-three, indicating a response rate of approximately fourteen percent. At those responses, the vote was in favor of amending the zoning ordinance sixteen or thirty-seven percent. Again, amending the zoning ordinance with twenty-seven responses and representing sixty-three percent. At the planning commission discussion on February the fourteenth, the commission was opposed to amending the zoning ordinance to reduce the setback requirement for projections into rear yards. Concerns were raised during the discussion, concerns raised during the discussion centered around the potential for a negative impact across the entirety of the zoning district. That's the background information. So at this point, board, hopefully you can recall all this, and where are we in terms of thoughts on it?
Mr. Chairman, just so everyone is aware, Mr. Golkowski has projected the entire overlay district for the R3C.
Thanks, Chris. So that's the three hundred and seventeen properties included?
That is correct.
So, board, you have the information? What are your thoughts at this point?
I think they're conservative legitimate and their emails for the ones opposed to it and my group. In fact, the planning commission also, yes, we have enough information.
Okay.
So we did our.
On the response, two-thirds were closed personally, and one-third were for, and the third that were for, in almost half of them, were on Trevor Drive, which are directly, you know, invested in this. So if you took that matter in the mix, you know, it would be probably about eighty percent of the folks who responded would be against this. This is their neighborhood and they're used to living, you know, with this space between their houses and changing the, what is to allow just a ten-foot distance from their property line, which you'd be sitting on top of your.
I think one of the major points some people had made in their emails back to Chris was that since this development was built, there had been more flooding on Five Points Road. And with the addition of the people was given, flooding would be increasingly worse on the residents concerned with it was behind that development.
Now, I care for the folks on Trevor Drive, they're in a bad spot. I mean, the developer did not do them a good, good deal, by the way. He booked those houses, but, you know, it is what it is. I wish we could find him some way through this ordinance minefield, but I'm not sure what it is. But I don't think changing any ordinance is just to accommodate their situation is the right way to go.
Okay, board, well, thank you for your comments. I am hearing that there is no appetite to change the R3C zoning district for the setbacks. Therefore, we're done with the topic. All right, let's move on then to agenda item number eight. You want to make a comment?
It's kind of off topic, but it's not regarding this issue, but it's, um, when it comes to discussions about redoing the whole zoning ordinance for the township, situations like this, I just want you to keep in mind because I think it'll just defeat everything and we'll waste a lot of money by redoing it because we continually allow attorneys to come in and rewrite our zoning ordinance. So I've seen it happen for years, so however we change it, we're still going to have developers and their attorneys come in and hand you what, how they want to change it. And the board, just like the board changed this whole area to get around spot zoning. So just keep it in mind. I just, the reason we're in this predicament in a lot of these areas is because, not this board, but boards allow these changes. So to rewrite the zoning ordinance again, we're just going to keep changing it as applications come in.
Well, zoning ordinances are a living document. They will change over time and we feel that perhaps, you know, a relook at something that was written in nineteen seventy is overdue in certain areas. So we will continue to have the conversation around what is appropriate in terms of a look at our zoning ordinances and where it makes sense to improve things. So for example, today, we're listing three hundred and twenty odd trees being chopped out and only a hundred and sixty-four have to be put back. So if we do nothing, that will continue. So these are the kind of things we can look at in terms of how to make it a better place to live. But thank you for your comment, Martin. Your good points. Okay, moving on, agenda item number eight, discussion possible awarding of the 2023 West Ocean Township paving program bids. That is with Chris.
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening, our bid results for the township's 2023 paving program and a war recommendation from Carol Engineering Corporation. Um, I listed the roads, uh, in the 2023 paving programs provided to the board, and the total mileage outlined for paving is four point seven miles. Uh, a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on February seventh. Um, and bids were opened on February twenty-first. There were seven bids that were received and they've outlined on the memo that is before the board. The apparent low bidder is Glasgow Inc. at a bid amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the bids ranged from a low of nine ninety-three, four ninety-five to a high of one million four hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. Uh, township's allocation for the 2023 paving program was just under one point two million dollars, uh, between the general fund and the state highway funds. Uh, additionally, the township is scheduled to receive funds, uh, about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from Hawkwood, PA for an overlap with the project area. Uh, public works director, Dave Woodward, did provide an analysis of the cost, that is in the memo that is before the board this evening. And based on the bid results and the information that is outlined, we recommend awarding the bid for the township's 2023 paving program, uh, to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, based on their bid dated February twenty-first, as recommended by Carol Engineering in their letter dated February twenty-seventh.
Thanks, Chris. Questions from the board? There are a question about Glasgow's performance in 2018. I think it was the last time we used them. Were you, were you happy with their work? Did you see, is their paving holding up as well as anything else?
It's very good.
Any other questions from the board? If Kate can have a motion there from a board member to approve the award of the paving, 2023 paving, uh, program to Glasgow Inc. in the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deana. For a second. Thank you, Ashley. Any public comments or questions? Martin?
Yes, just curious, what we, can we attribute, um, so many bid responses to? I remember a couple. The past couple of years, we were only getting like two companies and the question.
We usually get, we usually get at least four. It's usually Glasgow Myers, Duraco Sun Years, Earthbound Sun Years, Highway Sun. Uh, depends on, on their schedule.
I mean, there's definitely some things we do bid for, Martin, whether it's like one or two only. Um, I do think road, the paving, we do see generally more, but it is, it is quite high this year, Dave.
We made the, uh, we made the pre-bid meeting non-mandatory and I think that resulted in more bidders.
That's right. So.
So the pre-bid meeting was non-mandatory?
Yeah.
Did we lose anything by doing that, do you think?
I don't believe so. In past, in past years, it was mandatory and we got four. Maybe that would show up.
Yeah, and it's usually the same. Our job is, is of a size that we usually get the main players in the area.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one more. Is there a reason like if Duraco didn't submit it?
Uh, they're definitely people.
I just saw recently in a neighboring municipality where they lost, they were the lowest bidder and they lost because they didn't have the, uh, uh, the contractor name. And so they were like thirty or forty thousand dollars lower than the next highest bidder. It might have even been more.
Change Duraco.
Yep, and they lost it. So I don't remember, Dave, talking about that could happen with that responsible bidder.
It actually doesn't follow because we don't have a building permits. It doesn't follow.
Yeah, we have a different way of our responsible contractor. Things that are like road paving, stormwater projects that don't require building permits, that we don't, um, use the responsible contracting ordinance for those. The, uh, the, do you have a thought, Steve? The electrical infrastructure upgrade, it'll be done at the township complex to accommodate the heat charges. That will be using our responsible contractual bits for that. Okay. Any other questions, Steve?
Making the assumption they're right before they go. Okay. It's metal, right?
Any other questions? Okay, ready to take the vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes four to zero. Next is agenda item number nine, continued discussion possible approval of a proposal from Carol Engineering for a solar energy structural analysis for the public works facility building fee.
Mr. Chairman, uh, before the board this evening, is continued discussion regarding proposal from Carol Engineering Corporation for the completion of a structural analysis, um, for the public works facility. Uh, this proposal, uh, is in the amount of fifty-four hundred dollars. That was previously discussed by the board at the February twenty-first meeting. Um, there were questions that were raised during that discussion, including ensuring that the report was to be signed by a professional engineer and if recommendations were going to be provided if it was determined that the roof doesn't have sufficient capacity to support the equipment. Uh, the proposal was revised to address both of these items. Um, as noted previously, the township's 2023 budget allocated two hundred thousand dollars in the capital reserve fund associated with work, um, with the electrical study that was completed in 2022. Um, so as noted on the proposal, they've amended item two to include in the first sentence that, uh, the report will be signed and sealed by the evaluating professional engineer. And, uh, believe, uh, under item number two in italicized, it says that if it's determined that the roof has insufficient capacity to support the addition of solar panels, the report will not provide recommendations or plans for roof reinforcements since it is assumed that the panels would be designed at an alternate location where costly building modifications would not be required.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Are there any board questions or comments on this clarification from Carol? Okay. So at this point, the board has a decision to make as to whether they want to move forward with the cost of fifty-four hundred dollars to do this assessment. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make one.
Okay, there's a, there's a little hesitancy, I think, from the board there. So does that mean we're not quite sure this is value for money at this point or worth doing? Where are we?
I think we need to get the structural analysis, uh, get the analysis completed. I'm a little, still a little disappointed that we're not putting ourselves in the position to give recommendations to reinforce it, but we need to get this stuff done, knowing that we can move forward. I don't understand the.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any other comments from the board?
I guess, I agree with John, but I guess it's all timing. Are we really going to move forward with it now or is it to do this at a time?
Well, we're doing a fine insurance policy here. You know, if we can go ahead and put solar panels on there, this study will tell us we can do it.
Yeah.
That's what we do.
So you're challenging the fifty-four hundred dollars, or, you know, it's a hundred, what's their engineer rate, about a hundred and twenty an hour?
I think it's, I think it's split around one fifty.
One fifty? So this is like thirty hours, like a man a week, not one man a week of work, don't they? So, you know, to review the site, look at the information, do some calculations, seems reasonable to me, so. Okay, so Ashley has made a motion. Will you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Is there any public comment on this? All right, are we ready to take a vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing no, the motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number ten, discussion possible authorization to advertise the following proposed ordinance amendments to the West Ocean Township code ordinances. Amendment to chapter fifty-seven parks and recreation area and an amendment to chapter seventy-eight vehicles and traffic. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening, are two proposed ordinance amendments to consider advertisement. Uh, the first would amend chapter fifty-seven, which would amend sections fifty-seven three T and fifty-seven three U, uh, in order to revise the rules for the use of the dog park and skate park at Robert Lambert Park respectively. Uh, Dave Woodward and Dorian McLune recently reviewed the rules for these parks and found them to be outdated, specifically the hours that the dog park would be closed for maintenance are not specified, and the skate park regulations reference an attendant, which has been discontinued for several years of a recommendation of the township's liability insurance carriers. This would clean up that, those provisions. Uh, the other ordinance that is before the board to consider advertising is amendment to chapter seventy-eight. Uh, the proposed ordinance would amend sections seventy-eight seven, seventy-eight nineteen point one, and seventy-eight twenty-one in order to, uh, add the traffic signals in the township to this chapter. Uh, that's section seventy-eight twenty-one, uh, to provide prohibitions against blocking certain driveway entrances on Market Street and, or Malik Street, excuse me, um, and to remove the prohibition against parking at specified times on certain streets. Uh, regarding the latter, which I'm hypothetically misspoke, that is for section seventy-eight twenty-one. Um, I spoke with Sergeant Gracer in the Traffic Safety Division, and these provisions were originally instituted due to parking concerns in these neighborhoods. However, the Westchester area school district has expanded the parking lot of East High School, and he is not, he says these provisions are no longer necessary and are more of a hindrance to the residents living in that area on the street. Because right now, it currently prohibits parking between six AM and nine AM, which would correspond with the school, which would correspond with the school beginning of school day.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Other questions from the board on these proposed amendments to chapter fifty-seven, seventy-eight?
Um, I just had a comment on civic, civic A. Um, I just want to add a couple of things on there, Chris is new to it with it and doing it with everybody, um, and your dogs. I would just comment that M must be fully vaccinated because they may just have this temper and unnecessary rabies also, so I want to make sure.
Should we, well, both fully should, you list what you want vaccinated.
Or, and I said per county or whatever requirements are, is what I said. I just said fully vaccinated per county requirements added onto that. Either county requirements? I don't know, either or state, I don't know where the requirements are.
I don't know, I think I like Sean's idea of what is it that you want them to be vaccinated, but we can look into what it is. I know rabies.
Rabies is a big one. Yeah, that's for sure. There's, um, either way. And then also the next one down, passport identification with current year license information. I know it's assumed, but I just want to make sure it's the current year that they have a license. And, um, just to clarify, under owners slash handlers, the second one down, may not bring more than three dogs per owner into the park at one time. And then the second, the last one down, under owners or handlers, I don't know if you want to also include vaping there. Right now, we say may not smoke or, or vape at the park. I'm just on my leases.
We could add that to all of ours.
Yeah. Do you want to add that to, and then to the.
Do you want to just, well, okay. Did you want to say tobacco products, but?
Is that considered tobacco? I don't know, I think, I don't think it is.
So, so go back though for the may not bring more than three dogs. So if me and my husband went there, we could bring six dogs.
Per owner resident. May not bring more than three dogs per owner. I added into the park at one time.
But there's two of you that's.
Right, so it was a thing, is it?
You have an owner, you have an owner.
Right, we'd be able to bring six dogs?
I don't know.
I think like if you don't put that in there, me and my husband come to the park, we're allowed to bring three dogs. Or the owners, handlers, we can bring three dogs. If you put yours in, I think we can bring six dogs.
What, what language are you suggesting of putting there?
Keep it the way it is. Because, because the way it's owned. Keep it the way it is, because, because the way is owners, handlers up top.
I don't know.
It's, to me, it's collectively the owners, handlers can bring together three dogs. And I don't care, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm asking you, that's why I just wanted to raise the issue of if we pull up and have six dogs, is that okay?
Well, you're both owners of the dogs, right?
I don't know whose names are on the licenses. To be honest, probably mine, because I'm the sucker now, I'm just.
I'm finding it a white person, whatever you do, it's a problem right there. And then on exhibit B, I just had under required, I had properly strapped and approved helmets.
But who's approving them?
Isn't there a, when your, when your bid says approved by whoever?
But who's going to be, if we don't have an attendant there, who's going to be enforcing that?
No, approved by the regulations, whatever the regulations are.
No, I'm sure there's.
Come here, sort of approve.
They're stamped with certain, certain cases, there's not, no official approval.
For helmets, there's no regulation.
I mean, there's many different regulations, but like CDC probably has the guideline, or different organizations that have different guidelines, but I don't.
Approved helmets per guidelines. And then again, I just had vaping under.
Yeah, vaping's a good one.
I think for the, my recommendation would be for the vaping, probably add that to section, because I'm looking at the code now, fifty-seven three S prohibits smoking, prohibiting in all your, in all your parks, we'd probably add vaping.
Yeah.
Vaping in there as well.
Fifty-seven what?
Fifty-seven three X. Wait, make the.
Yeah, I think that's.
That way it'll cover everything.
That's all I have.
Can I ask a few more before you take a motion? So you want me to add, do you hold a section to amend fifty-seven three S to add the vaping in any parks, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then I don't think it hurts to repeat it in these specific roles.
All right.
Okay.
Is there any other issue?
No.
Do any of the board members have any other comments on the language?
I just have one question, with Section seventy-eight dash twenty-one, according to this, there are all these streets that have prohibited parking because of schools, are there any other parking that's being prohibited in that neighborhood?
It's being deleted, because these are current provisions that they have asked to get.
Those signs have actually been removed two, three years ago. This is just catching up that it was still a ordinance.
Okay, so it really hasn't been enforced anyway. So we're just cleaning things out. There aren't any more signs like that in that neighborhood, are there?
Yep, we've looked, so when, when this was being prepared, Dave and I looked at all those roads were adopted under the same, same ordinance, so we caught all the roads that were in that ordinance.
Okay, so they're all been removed, then, and nothing else, parking prohibited in that area then? Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Margie, you had some comments on the landing?
Yeah, well, it's a second four-month-old puppy I have. A couple of things I note here, that the best won't spay or neuter them until they're six months old, so, what's that?
They can't, I don't think they can be a bark.
Right, so I would take that must be at least four months old out of there, either put six months old.
Well, when somebody doesn't do it?
What's that?
Somebody might not do it.
But it does say in the rules that they must be spayed or neutered. So if this word is saying they must be spayed until six months old, then we should, we should amend it to correspond with recommendation of minimum proportions.
Well, that's not true, to get a rescue, they have to be two months, maybe two months old before they give them to anyone. My rescue was due to two months old. That's their requirements, they have to do that, some state law or something. So putting a timeframe in there, I don't think is, right now there's no timeframe, so I would just leave it open, it must be spayed or neutered, you can decide when you want to do that to your dog.
But it says that they must be, that says they must.
There is a timeframe.
I don't know if I would know whether dogs spayed or neutered or three months, four months, or six months old, so we have these rules, but it's really only the dog's owners to understand that they could be exposing their dog to, dogs that aren't vaccinated, dogs that aren't spayed or neutered. It's really only owners to understand, we have these in place, but we don't have any enforcement.
Exactly, so I mean, just keep it the way it is.
Yeah.
That's why I put timeframe in there.
And then also, I've noticed the sign at the, at the dog park where it was closed for cleaning, I think between like ten and twelve.
Ten and eleven thirty.
Ten and eleven.
That's what, that's what initiated this, we wanted to move that time back to seven.
Well, I'm just curious how many people bring their dogs for a workout?
They've actually been looking, and it's not, it's not real bad.
Okay, I'm just, those that work, that go to work at eight-thirty or nine, or drop their kids off at school or whatever, if they take the dogs, I would think that seven to eight-thirty would.
They've been, they've been monitoring up there.
Okay.
They say it's not real busy.
I can see that's good for the skate park, I guess, but for the dog park, it's kind of a lot of people up, okay. I think it might get some, some rental people on that one.
Well, she'll be someone who does use it, but.
Yeah. Okay, and it does an hour and a half every day to clean that up?
Operationally, some days it's, it's none, some days it's two. It all depends on what they're doing. They could be up there welling, they could be doing some pressure washing, they try to pressure wash the pad and pavilion up there occasionally, so sometimes it actually takes a little bit longer.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So, Steph, you got what you needed from that discussion in terms of updates. Okay, so at this point, with those updates, we'd like for a motion to authorize a, a endorsement of the changes to, the amendments to Chapter fifty-seven and seventy-eight and fifty-seven, oh, it's still fifty-seven, for the West Ocean Township Code Ordinance. Is there someone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any final comments from the board or the public? Here, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes four zero. Agenda item number eleven, discussion impossible approval of resolution number eleven, twenty-twenty-three, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Chesapeake County Vision Partnership Program. This is for the board. So please help us, remind us why we work with this, Chris.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we discussed the potential applications to the county's vision partnership program, and proposed application would be for the development of a park recreation and open space plan, which was allocated in the township's twenty-twenty-three budget, amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. Under the requirements for the application, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily require a resolution, it requires a letter of commitment, and I, I kind of feel that we're probably going to make a resolution, sort of the same purpose, and would send a more formal message when included with our application. Essentially, the application, and these are all the requirements in the grant manual, the application would be that the board approves the filing of an application with the vision partnership program. The township commits to forming a project task force to guide the completion of the plan in accordance with Section eight-two-B five of the grant manual.
You're missing four, four is there?
Oh, I apologize.
No, I just want to make sure that's what you meant, so.
It should be, it should be task force, so I will update that, that is why I printed the signature page separately. That we have allocated seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget, the capital reserve fund, towards this project. The township would commit to funding a fifty percent match towards the cost of the project. The match is actually only forty percent, however, in the research that was completed, municipalities have been matching higher than that, and most are giving around fifty percent. And then it would authorize me to execute and file the appropriate forms of the Chester County Planning Commission. So those would be the four requirements.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any board questions or comments about the, the planned submission of this, for submission of grant application to Chesapeake County or the resolutions written? Is there a motion then to authorize, to approve resolution number eleven, twenty-twenty-three, authorizing the submission of grant application to the Chesapeake County Vision Partnership Program? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any public comment or questions on the motion? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes four zero. Agenda item number twelve is an agreement between, continued discussion impossible approval of a two-year agreement between West Ocean Township and Inboard Inc. for immunologic software for the Township's codes department. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening is a proposed two-year agreement between the Township and Inboard Inc. This is for the immunologic software that is utilized by the codes department, which has been in place since twenty-fourteen. We currently pay twelve thousand, seven hundred, fifty-five dollars annually for this software, and the proposed contract would be for twelve hundred dollars a month, which would be fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars per year for two years, which represents a thirteen percent annual price increase, which would not go into effect until September first. This was previously discussed at the February seventh meeting. Topics included reviewing the agreement from when the software was acquired in twenty-fourteen and evaluating other options due to certain concerns that were raised by the codes department. As part of this meeting, we contacted Inboard Inc., and they returned with a shorter commitment and reduced price. We did request a copy of the twenty-fourteen agreement as well, search the township records, and we could not locate a copy of it. I'm, I'm wondering if there, I don't know what kind of arrangement there was, but the township at the time purchased a perpetual license, so I'm not sure what kind of agreement was in place. So reviewing this matter, we think that this is acceptable compared to the three-year agreement at a thirty-nine percent price increase that was previously proposed. The new pricing structure would not begin until September first, as opposed to March first, which would minimize the impact of the twenty-twenty-three budget, allow the township to properly budget for this cost in twenty-twenty-four. This would allow for the transition to, from version SE, which we're currently utilizing to version CE, which will also no longer be supported as of the end of twenty-twenty-five. While members of the codes department team, Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, have advised that this program is not the most user-friendly, transitioning to version CE would probably, would allow for an evaluation of this new version against other products that may be available on the market. And then two years will also provide for an adequate time to evaluate other options and lead a migration strategy in the event version CE does not fit the needs of the codes department.
When we get to version CE?
I don't have an answer to that question. Probably not, I, I would guess probably not until September, when this would go into effect.
Is, is, is it simply a case of accessing different, accessing CE's, is it a different version, or filing compatibility between what we have now, this new version, if we're going to add information?
Yeah.
The version CE is an online version. SE is a server version, so it's a cloud-based version, so it's going to be different interface, and we got to migrate it to it. One of the questions to ask when we enter this, is how soon can we migrate? As soon as we're not signing up for the migration yet, we're not going to be able to migrate as fast.
So, do we have to spend an amount of time and effort and resources to migrate to version CE and still end up saying this isn't the right software package for us?
The migration will be handled directly by Inboard, they will migrate our data. That's part of my understanding, is by changing it, the data is migrated from their side.
Okay, so the demand on resources like you and others in the codes team is going to be small to not.
It's still going to be a learning curve though.
It's real learning curve.
But for using the new stuff, but the actual, just doing what the transition is not on us?
That's typically done in the past, now, I haven't read the full agreement, but in the past, in my experiences, when you, when you change in that, the migration is done by.
We, we recently did a similar, did a similar process with our financial software, migrated from a desktop client to an online-based program. I don't, I don't want to speak for Christine, but I don't believe we had, I believe Munis Tyler Technologies completed that migration behind the scenes, I don't think there was anything that we necessarily needed to do.
Yeah.
No, I think this is the way we should go, I think this is a good plan, because it does give enough time to start looking at other providers, to look at this new version of the software, and comparing that to the other providers, not the old version, new version.
And they reduce, I'll give them credit, they reduce their amount by two hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, month, and, but the start later on in the year, so that it would lessen our budgetary impact.
Is, that is good for two years, or is there an increase after one year?
This price is held for two years.
Are we going to do the host, not hosted option?
Yes, it is hosted.
And then I have one other question. On the exhibit A, it's not consistent, under service levels, it says a four-hour response time and a three-minute recovery, but if you go to section one point five, there's a two-hour recovery time. So we probably take out recovery under service levels and put in another session called recovery, and say within two hours at any point in time. Assuming inconsistent, you don't need recovery for service levels, or you put, keep it in service levels and put two-hour recovery time, something.
So what we can do, what we can work through is this condition on that change, I can go back into the logic and have to make that adjustment before the final document is executed.
Okay. I think the termination clause is goofy too, I've been reading it three times, I still don't totally know what it means.
Yeah, I know.
So I would want.
Well, we should clarify that.
Yeah, the paragraph two point one, so I think there's a word missing, but it's following the initial term, I don't know what, and exhibit A, automatic renew, I'm not sure what that means, but, so, basis of two-year term, and then it automatically renews for one-month terms, unless you provide written notice to terminate, which has to be given no fewer than ninety calendar days prior to the last, so basically three months prior to the end of the second year, you have to give that you don't want to automatically renew. But then, any such termination shall be effective as the date that would have been the first day of the next renewal term. But the renewal term is a month-to-month, so.
Yes, it does, it makes sense for me, yeah.
What we're saying is that, it's only going to renew, if you don't give the notice, three months before the end of the two years, it renews for a month, but, and that last sentence, that says it's only, the termination is effective as the date that would have been the first day of the next renewal term.
Well, maybe if you give ninety days' notice, seventy days before the end of the two-year period, you stop for that extra month, that's all it means.
And two point three, either customer three should pay the full remaining balance up to the end of the initial term, if we do an early termination.
Yeah, that's, that's strong.
Well, the initial, the initial term would be that two-year period, so, I don't think that we would be looking to change to anything else during this two-year period, and if so, it would be a short window.
So you're locked in of that payment for two full years, is that correct? So I would just say, and I always do this, when you get into this contract, tickle it, like, you need to give the notice, I would tickle it a hundred and twenty days out, or even a hundred and fifty days out, have an outlook reminder of, on a bunch of people's outlooks, so that it reminded, it reminded.
The exhibit A in the packet still lists the three-year term.
Okay, I get that.
It's like the original.
Exhibit A, exhibit A has been updated. The bottom of page sixteen, the top of, and page seventeen both indicate three-year terms.
So we can get, we can get exhibit A clarified with terms as well, with those on this time of course.
Okay. So is the board happy with the revised proposal? Okay, so, can I have a motion then, please? I'll describe, so the motion is to approve a two-year agreement between West Ocean Township and Inboard Inc. for immunologic software for the Township Codes Department, subject to updated exhibit As related to the term of pricing. Is there a second?
Yes, I have something.
Any questions or comments on the board on the motion? Any public questions or comments? Margie?
Yeah, can you just explain the information that's used in many software, like?
Brian, you want to take that?
It's used for all the permitting, building permits, zoning permits, drainage permits, electrical permits, plumbing permits, all the permits for construction are managed in the system and then issued by, to the system. So we use that approximately six to seven thousand permits a year.
And then I pulled up an article from twenty-two years ago, county makes deal to share GIS data with West Ocean, which I know this is different information, but are there, is there a consortium, or is there something that the county uses that?
This is not related to GIS.
Well, I know, but do they have something where?
County, county does not issue. County does not issue permits. The county does not do code enforcement.
Okay.
That GIS is what they now base the Chesapeake use on.
Right, okay. And then, this is kind of really bugs me, irritates me a little bit, that this is a product of Carol Engineering?
Not anymore. They sold the company. They don't own this company any longer.
They're at the same address?
They mainly space from them, but that is not, they're not owned or operated or under the umbrella of Carol Engineering any longer.
So Margie, at the previous meeting, we discussed whether this software was the most applicable and user-friendly and what we wanted for the long-term. And discussion with staff indicated that it would take too much current resource effort to walk into that in such a short period of time. And we had to consider whether we wanted to review with this munologic. And they really would prefer more, you know, a window of time to do a thorough evaluation of competing products. So this is what we're really going to create tonight, give a window to allow us to say, what is the better long-term solution? It may be this product, it may not be.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised that this came up because I heard the discussion from whatever meeting it was discussed and it seemed that.
Well, we were, we were opposed to the price increase, et cetera, but we want to support the software.
And the current contract ends when?
The current contract had been sort of been a perpetual, like I said, we purchased a perpetual license and we're updecreased to the most recent version.
The proposal was if you want to continue with this, you need to pay this amount of money from this day. And that's what we said we don't like.
And again, the product that we're utilizing is near, is no longer going to be supported in about one year or two years and nine months.
So they wouldn't go with the one-year agreement then?
I, to be perfectly honest, I wouldn't propose a one-year agreement to this board because that wouldn't be enough time for us to appropriately evaluate other options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Margie. Any other questions or comments on the motion? We're getting ready to take a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes four zero. Finalizing on the agenda is number 13, approval of the bills to be paid in the general fund, sewer revenue fund, the waste and recycling fund, and the capital reserve fund. I'll make the motion to pay the bills from these funds in just a second. Chris, I have a question on page, the prepaid fund 08. There's two Blackboard K-12 period charges that are identical under the same account. Is there, how is the, what is that?
It might be separated out by different categories within the, within the fund. I can check with Christine.
Just give an explanation on that.
I just have one question on the regarding $2,220 for legal fees for a town informant?
Those are not legal fees. Those are professional services related to the review for the, for the land development application at the West Ocean Shopping Center. The informant Taylor is the appointed traffic engineer to review those and those fees are being passed on to the developer.
Okay, because it's under legal services, that's why I asked.
It's under, no, it should be generally for, for that's professional services or that might be coded, that might be coded incorrectly. We can get that reclassified. But no, those are, that's not legal. Those are engineer, traffic engineering services.
And while you're checking into those two Blackboard invoices, there's also four more for Blackboard Connect. Again, the same check number 77782 on the first page there.
The Blackboard Connect invoices get divided up amongst varying categories within the budget for utilization purposes based on different categories. I'm just not sure why it's separated twice within the sewer fund. There might be a separation between operations and administration. I just have to check on that with Christine. But it is, the total bill amongst everything is roughly $22,000.
I was going to say, those six charges came up to $22,628.
But it's divided, it's divided up amongst different categories within the budget. But I'll have to check. I'm not sure why it was separated twice within, within the sewer.
Collection and treatment.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking as well, but I can verify that with Christine.
Any other questions from the board on the bills to pay?
And just so the board's aware, so when we do those divisions, they will all contain the same check number.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, is there any public comment on the bills to pay? Margie?
Just a question. So I know a couple of years ago, we went to apply deductible on the health insurance. And can you just verify whether or not the employees get reimbursed for those deductibles?
They do not.
Okay, so, all right. And then, has the township ever audited cell phones, cellphone usage? How many employees have them? Who has them? And the same with EZ passes?
Well, EZ passes are only in municipal vehicles. Then in the cell phones, I do that. And I kick some people off.
Okay, that's great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second, so we're ready to take a vote. All in favor of paying the bills say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes four zero. I see some folks have joined the meeting after we were about halfway through. If any, you missed the option for public comment also on the agenda. If you have any issues to raise, please say so.
I'm sorry, we, we thought the meeting was at seven. That's why we were late.
Is there a particular topic you wish to comment on?
Yeah, number seven, we live in, on Trevor Drive there, 108 Trevor Drive. We're in area four, right, you guys?
So this is a recap, the board discussed began based on the survey results. It was, it was majority, 67, 63% of respondents were opposed to change in the setback. So the board decided not to report the change in the zoning.
So how many responses did you get? Wasn't there 300 and some?
We had 14% responses out of the 300, whatever it was.
17, I believe.
17.
17 were negative or against it?
It was. I'm giving you the right numbers.
27 against, 17 for, or 16 for, excuse me.
So couldn't we assume that there was 27 against and the remaining 300?
No, we cannot assume that. Board did not assume that. We just simply did not respond.
But that's all perception, right?
Well, more people voted against it.
Were they against it?
More people voted against it was that based on the overall information, were opposed to changing the zoning.
So what the 300 and some people that didn't vote, you, they, they obviously don't care whether they're going to change.
I don't know what their, why the reasons are there.
You didn't lay out the guidelines either because we didn't, all eleven homeowners that lived there, they didn't give a positive vote towards it. So we all had and felt that that's, we asked you how you were going to weigh your decision.
Yeah, so we would, we would view the information, make a decision. That's what we did tonight.
And not all eleven homeowners on Trevor Drive responded.
Yeah, but say we had because we weren't told that we shouldn't. We were told that it's residents outside our area. That you were pulling everybody around.
That's not true.
I believe you received a letter. Everybody received a letter, did they not?
We did receive the letter.
This board said that they wanted to conduct the survey amongst all the property owners of the R3C zoning district, which included everybody on Trevor Drive. All those letters were nailed out on January 18th, giving them approximately six weeks in which to respond from February 28th.
It didn't have the date of this meeting here today and the time on that letter.
It's reasonable.
It said in March.
No, it's reasonable to assume that if a cutoff period is February 28th, that those would be tallied and then the determination would be, or then the results will be brought to this board shortly thereafter.
But assume, you can't assume anything if there's not a date on the letter.
The board's agenda is, is posted on the website the week before the board meeting.
As long, as well as all the materials.
I just can't believe that I can't have four-foot variance that I could sit on my patio out back. I just, I just can't get over that.
So what I, what I feel is was not fair from the very beginning. When I came in here with my attorney, my very first meeting with you guys, you guys all voted before my attorney even got a chance to speak. And I, and Kristen had to say, oh, your attorney's here. And he, he spoke after you guys all voted. Your mind was already made up. And I don't think that was fair.
I don't remember that process.
Oh, I do. If I was sitting here, I don't.
Actually, my lawyer said something about it too.
And I, I don't, and, and I sat in here a month ago or two months ago in your meeting when another person raised a question that they had a commercial property and they needed to go in their front backyard setback 17 feet or 18 feet. I sat here and listened to him and you guys like, oh, no big deal. 17 feet in their front yard for a commercial property. I can't get 4D feet in my backyard for a great patio? It doesn't, just doesn't seem fair.
The decision on your application before the zoning hearing board was not made by this body. The decision was made by the zoning hearing.
Well, when I was here with my attorney, the very first meeting, before I went to the zoning hearing board, I sat here, you guys all talked about it before my attorney even got out and spoke for me. And you guys all said, no, we're denying it. And then my attorney spoke. That is true, Chris.
No, no, no. No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, you're saying this board denied it. What this board did was they, Mike, please let me finish. What this, what this board did was this board took a position in which to oppose the application. With any application that comes before the zoning hearing board, the board supervisors has the option in which to send their solicitor out position for the application. They've done that on, I've been here 18 months, they've done it on numerous occasions. So that was the decision that they made. You presented your argument to the zoning hearing board and then the zoning hearing board had the decision-making authority based on the merits of the case in which to whether, whether or not to grant or deny the variance. So the zoning hearing board was the body that denied your variance request, not the board supervisor.
Well, what I'm saying is the first meeting, the very first meeting before I went to the zoning hearing board, I'm sitting right here with my attorney. You guys all voted no, denied it before my attorney even spoke. That's what I'm talking about.
We didn't deny anything. What we said was, are we opposed to this? Are we opposed to this motion? Do we want to send our solicitor to oppose it at the meeting? That was the discussion by the board.
And you, yeah, you were against it from one thing.
We said, based on the information that we have, we're against it.
But you hadn't even listened to my attorney. That's what I was trying to say.
Well, there was also the situation, the board had previously reviewed the application for neighboring property and they took, they took the exact same position.
But he never, he never.
He never put it in.
He never, he backed it out before you.
No, that's not true either.
He's sitting right there.
You submitted an application and you withdrew it, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. You withdrew the application.
I just can't believe that I can't get a four-foot patio.
Yeah, I just don't, I mean, I sat here quietly for this meeting. You guys have talked as a collective about different matters. You've all incited your opinion to come up with that decision. And nobody that's written in has opposed here. And I just don't see how this setback does. And the question is, all those people that wrote in, did we look to see if they even followed the setback rules? And I understand there could be a grandfather from the past, but half these people could have a property, they could have a deck within it because of the old rules. So we're now listening to people or taking a vote of somebody that could be in breach of what we're trying to get approved. Half of the houses in that development have garages, have sheds, have pools. And well, I'll say garages because that's a structure, or decks within five feet of the fence. So some of those people that could have wrote and been against it could be, have the exact same requirements that we're asking for on their property. I mean, this is just, I hate to say it, but insanity that we're here for a five-feet setback. I think it was a great call that you guys made only five feet. But you have to be on the side of the residents here. And the fact that you only had 16 write-back negative out of 345. 27, 27 out of 343 is a small majority. It is not the main majority.
It is.
If that was a vote, they wouldn't even come up with an answer for that. I mean, you can't, you can't set the precedent of the 27 people that decided to reply back to elect.
317 letters were sent out to give everybody an equal chance to get that.
And the majority didn't care because they didn't reply back.
Well, we can't force people to respond.
Exactly, but you can't take 27 people that replied again and say that that sets the precedent. You can't say that 27.
So you say we have to support the residents. That's exactly what we're doing.
27.
At 27 out of 343, you're supporting. And we have one person that's a vice chairman that was on our side during this day. You guys all want to be reelected. We're here a part of the community. We're paying taxes. We've shown up to these. We could be a part of these. To ask for a five-foot setback or a change in five feet is absolute. Like I can't believe I'm sitting here paying taxes, wanting to live here. And I just got my West Ocean tax bill. Just today I opened it up, 600 and odd dollars that I have to pay before April 3rd to pay extra. And we can't get a change of five feet. And what, what I don't understand is the previous zoning was 30 feet in the rear yard. And it was 30 and 15 and you reduced it to 20. So why not reduce the 15 to 10 so the people can have a 10-foot deck? I mean, if you let them build the house.
And there's only two of us that need it. There's only two that need this. Nobody else. Everybody else is going to get decks in our neighborhood.
And has the proper amount, you can put 10 feet in with the amount of setback they have. I mean, I'm sorry, I know you may be frustrated up there and think that we're acting out of line a little bit. I can understand that. But we're fighting for our decks here, guys. You have a deck showing on the back of your house to grow. John, you have a deck on the back of your house to grow. Chris, you have a deck on the back of your house.
Than 10 feet beyond.
But you didn't buy your house and know what your setback was. I guarantee you did not know the setback when you bought your house.
I do feel for you. I mean, the developers put us both in a bad situation.
So make an exception for two homers. You need to make an exception for two homers. I went to the zoning hearing board and his, the reason for the zoning hearing board is because they didn't want all the other, they didn't want to set a precedence for all the other homeowners. Which I thought the zoning hearing board was supposed to be, is based on one-on-one.
It is.
But that's not the intent.
The explanation they gave me was because they.
Give your final appeal and just in the court of common, please.
Well, it's too late now. I only had 30 days to do that. You guys gave me a certificate of occupancy with the holes drilled in the ground and the footings poured. And how didn't you check your T's and cross your I's when, when you gave the certificate of occupancy? You guys gave the certificate of occupancy to his house and the pad was already poured. And that's true. I mean, I went, I went over that. You want to talk about rules and checks and balances. You guys didn't follow your own. I mean, I went over that with Rick. I already been with Rick for many times. I'd love to hear what the, what the other resident here has to say, what she thinks. Because her opinion matters just as much as ours.
I feel for you guys, but I would love to go find the tape. I stood up at that podium and when this development, when we were granting, the board was granting all kinds of variances for the developer.
Not granting variances, they changed the ordinance because there was a problem, problem.
Okay, but I said, this development is going to cause problems. The residents are going to be in this room at some point in time and here they are.
Well, you've met the residents who didn't like the fact that we, that they were, and your property street was going in. There was a lot of.
But you approved that.
But I want to speak to one thing that they, they said that made sense.
We approved the change in the zoning with the requirements that have the setback what it is. You're here saying.
So I'm going to take a head step further. You took the big step already. You need to take a head step further here.
This is not a safety issue. I have a problem with the fact that there is a safety issue when you make a new road parallel to another road. So Five Points Road, there was supposed to be whatever our zoning ordinance is, what is it? 100 feet or 75 feet for sightline? And we gave the developer, we reduced it by I think more than 50% so he could put this road in. There's going to be rear-end accidents and everything else. That's a safety issue that the board granted. The developer did build this development. Them needing four or five more feet is not a safety issue for anyone.
Thank you.
And if they're back, the neighbors that they are adjacent to approved it.
All showed up to the last year and with approval. Eleanor, who's 80 years old, came here and stood up and said she was okay. We, every neighbor behind us is okay with it. And our, and there's, and the fence is completed around our development. So our houses all have six-foot white stockade fence around you for a road. I put up a privacy tree wall. I just ordered $3,000 worth of trees to put up that are going to stand 15 feet tall that nobody's going to even see my backyard.
Please, just please.
We have to do something here, folks.
Well, we have done something. We made a decision early tonight not to approve a change of the zoning.
So I should put my front patio, my furniture and stuff with the word told me, just put it on my yard. My dining room table, just put it on the front yard. That's, that's wonderful.
Anyone said that, but.
No, actually they did.
Did I see an application coming forward that they want to put a pool in their front yard? Somebody and another.
That was, yes, that was a different development.
Did they allow?
As strongly as you feel, and I hear you're asked. There's other folks in the neighborhood there that if we change the ordinance to comply to make your situation go away, they would be very upset about it. So it's kind of like.
But a house back up to has a garage two feet from their property line, John.
Are there other houses that someone else can decide, hey, I'm going to go to mine if this property line isn't there?
No, no.
So you change it with 317 or whatever it is, other homes that may have the impact.
They're all grandfathered in. They all have, they all been here for 20 years. I mean, these houses are 50 years old.
It's hard to argue with the specifics. I'm just saying there are a lot of people wrote in opposed to it. So they don't, they don't want it because they envisaged their neighbor building something.
27.
Let me finish if you don't mind. They envisaged someone building right up to this new limit and they don't want it and they opposed it in the survey. So we did something that tried to solicit.
I don't feel any genuine argument, you sure. This is not a genuine argument you're giving. You're almost grinning at it while you're talking.
I'm not grinning, okay?
You sure are.
I know, I know. We're not going to, I don't.
I'm not going to convince you. So as chair of the meeting, you've had a voice, we made a decision.
And this meeting started at 7:00 every other time. Now it hasn't started.
They changed, they changed the time to 6. First of all, these work sessions, for as long as I've been here, started at 6:00 PM. And the board made a decision in 2021 to move all meetings to 6:00 PM.
I was outside the last one with the door locked at 7:00 PM. So was your, Robyn S. was also waiting at the door trying to come in. This was locked last week.
Can you let me finish, please? That was a mistake.
And mistakes happen.
It was an accident.
Exactly.
Accidents happen.
Exactly. And this was an accident that you guys approved all this and we need an extra five feet to put a deck in.
So the builder got rich over this and we get nothing.
And you do this for your residents. Yet you're asking to be reelected and have petitions signed.
Well, we do have to represent all the residents in the.
And you all were 100%.
Happy with that decision. Do we understand?
I went, I went front of the zoning hearing board. There was no opposition. There was no opposition at all.
Quite frankly, I think that would be your best avenue for re-thought. Granted, you didn't win that one, but there's two new members on that board now.
But I can go again in front of them?
I can file again.
Can't file again.
So I can't file again. So what?
You can't. Maybe the others might be able to.
But that doesn't give him an answer that he needs.
I'm sorry for the situation, Ryan. I'm sorry for the situation, Ryan. We discussed his support earlier and there was not support to move it forward. So, all right, so we've discussed this long enough. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I see.
You make your motion, you second here.
I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye.
Thank you, Brian.